Yeah.
You're good.
I'm gonna make a wave.
Thank you, Chair of the City of Jacksonville.
Thank you, Chair.
Good morning, everyone. We'll call the October 1st, 2013 meeting of the Jackson City Council Order and ask Councilman Johnny Dodd, the leadest in our invocation and pledge, if you would, please rise.
Everybody stand. I'd like to ask Mr. Elvin Rocky Miller come up and leave some word of prayer.
Father God, we do thank you for this day. As always, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We do not take it for granted. We come petitioning your throne this morning asking you for guidance. Your word declares wisdom is the principal thing. Therefore, get wisdom. We ask that you grant us wisdom, grant the leaders wisdom, to walk in and out among such great people. Lead us and guide us according to your will and according to your way. We know and we understand that you say servants obey them that have the rule over you, but because you're such a fair God, you even command those that have the rule to be considered of those that they've been given charge over. So help leadership to walk in wisdom, to walk in integrity, most of all, to walk in love, to walk in peace. God, we thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy, and we acknowledge you in all our ways, knowing that you will direct our path. It is in the precious name of Jesus that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead to the ladies in flight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, roll call. Anita, I think you can show all council members present reception of Councilman Ernest Brooks. Item four is approval of the minutes of September 3rd, 2013, meeting of the council. The council will see copies of those minutes unless there are any additions or corrections. If there's no objection, we'll consider those minutes approved. Item five is invitation of public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you'll let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and let you address council. Item five, six is proclamations. We have three this morning, and let me call Donna Steins, Peggy Donaldson, Susan, and Ronnie Morris-Stem with the American Cancer Society.
Thank y'all for being here. I know y'all have a special month planned, so we have a proclamation. Whereas Paint the Town Pink is an actively of the American Cancer Society that promotes breast cancer awareness and gives individuals and communities an opportunity to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during the Paint the Town Pink of Jackson Madison County helps end breast cancer by funding the American Cancer Society's efforts to find cures and support programs and services for all people facing breast cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society invests more in breast cancer research than any other cancer type and have played a role in nearly every major breast cancer research breakthrough in recent history. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as American Cancer Society Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to participate in making strides against breast cancer event to be held October the 26th, 2013 at Jackson General's Park. And Donna, let me present this to you and then let you or whomever you'd like address the crowd.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and thank you to the council for the proclamation. We're, this is our second year, and we're very excited. Last year, we had over a thousand walkers, and this year, we hope to approach almost 2,000, so we hope to see everyone at General's Park on October 26th. So, thank you very much.
And we would like to present each of you with a pink ribbon and ask that you wear it in the month of October in support of breast cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Baron Taylor is here with JPB. This is me come up. I'll read this proclamation, and we'll find out where we're all supposed to be tonight and the shortest route to get to each one of them. It's a proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch and Target are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 1st, 2013 entitled National Night Out. Whereas last year's National Night Out campaign involved citizens, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials from over 15,000 communities from all over the 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And all over 37 million people participated in National Night Out in 2012. Whereas the 30th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Jackson to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Jackson plays a vital role in assisting the Jackson Police Department and the Madison County Sheriff's Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Jackson and is supporting National Night Out 2013 locally. And whereas it's essential that all citizens of the City of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jackson. Whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2013, as National Night Out and urge all citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event. Lieutenant, come up and tell us where we need to be in Williams.
I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, Chief Kendrick, and the command staff for allowing us to participate in the block parties. We have a total of 26 block parties. We'll be sending out an updated list. We had two additional parties that were called in since we sent the list out on Friday. Just a couple to highlight. Please make sure you go to 72 Wendy City Road. That's the new fire station. We gotta promote our city facilities. Also, JEA, new customer service center is having a block party also, too. And then we've got 24 other ones that are very good parties to go to, so please go out, have fun, and enjoy. Thank you.
Lieutenant Probably, and I'm sure Anita probably has left of all those I was there to watch locations, so I urge you to try to get out as many as you can. Let me ask Darryl Johnson Tuck, if she would, to come up on Domestic Violence Month, and I think we also have Mamie Hutcherson and Bridget Lockett, if y'all would come up, please, and accept the proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's a proclamation. Whereas approximately 1 in 4 women and nearly 1 in 7 men in the U.S. have experienced severe physical violence by an intimate partner at some point in their lifetime. And whereas according to the TBI, domestic violence resulted in 275 murder, non-negligent homicides from 2010 to 2012 in Tennessee. And whereas the problem of domestic violence affects all citizens of Jackson Madison County, Tennessee, regardless of gender, age, race, or religion, children exposed to such violence can suffer serious long-term consequences and are more likely to continue this vicious cycle. And whereas the key to ending violence in a community is having community efforts, we're stepping forward to break the cycle of violence and recommitting to putting an end to domestic violence in America. Whereas Women's Resource and Rape Assistance Program and the Jackson Madison County Task Force Against Domestic Violence in Jackson Madison County continued to research efforts, excuse me, that are evidence-based to help diminish domestic violence in our city and county. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to become aware of this destructive force in our society and become part of the efforts to stop violence in families. We appreciate RAP over the years and also our task force which worked with this. So, Darryl, if you'd come up and accept this, then feel free to make a comment if you would.
Thank you, Mayor Gist and Mayor Harris, for your support of survivors of domestic and sexual violence in Jackson and Madison County. I'm looking forward to the establishment of an advisory council on domestic and sexual abuse to explore more deeply the underlying causes of these devastating issues in our community and to recommend meaningful strategies for resolution. I would like to invite all council members to our conference on October 18th, and those present, the faces of domestic violence in West Tennessee, where we will actively be exploring ways in which we can address this issue in our community. And I'd like to encourage you all to continue to support survivors during the month of October by wearing purple ribbons and displaying them in your place of business and by sharing with RAP your ideas about what we can do together to stop the violence. Thank you. Do you have ribbons?
Thank you. Thank you.
Morning.
Thank you. Mamie had to sing a song.
Okay, before we get to item seven, let me just introduce some special people that's with us this morning. We have Dr. Nana Heckler from Union University. She has a group of students with her, all sociology majors. They're dealing with community life and social structure. If you all would please stand, I had the opportunity to speak to this group last week, and let us acknowledge you. Thank you for being here. Also Shirley Jones is with a group of our people that's in leadership Jackson this year. If you all would please stand and let us acknowledge you. Thank you for being here. Then also, it's been requested by Marty Clements. Marty is working on a big day on Veterans Day, for him to come up and make an announcement. So Marty, if you'd come up, and the podium is right over there, buddy.
Mayor, Council. Y'all have a packet up there.
Yes, sir.
That has the information in here. For the first time, the City of Jackson and Madison County is sponsoring a veterans program. It's on November 11th at 6:30 at Liberty High School. In here, may I borrow one of those packets, Matt? There is a patch that every veteran that comes to the program or does it, is going to receive one of these. This has been designed, you know, by the city and county, and it's going to be given to the veterans out there. We do have a good program. We've got a three-star general that's coming to it. We are looking for sponsorships, and again, we're looking for people that will help to buy the tickets to give to the veterans. And I'm asking that each one of y'all that are not a veteran and have a break is a veteran, and I appreciate your service there.
Thank you.
But if you don't mind, find a special veteran and give this back to them. If you need any other information, there will be more stuff sent out later. There should be an article or two in the paper. But again, we want to appreciate what the veterans have done, celebrate their service. The extra funds from this thing is going to go to the veteran cemetery, wherever it is to be put, either at Parker's Crossroad or Madison County, also the state veterans' home over in Humboldt, the junior ROTC programs here, the legal veteran services that we have for Madison County and for the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate your hard work on putting this program together to honor our veterans. We have no first readings under item seven, no second readings under item eight. Item nine is new business, is consideration of an application for participation in an after-school snack component as we're area-eligible, the Tennessee Child and Adult Care Food Program. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item two is consideration of street acceptance for Harding Place Section 6 and a portion of Bowling Drive.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion from council? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item three, and I hope Dave is here, and I think he is, presentation of the 2012-2013 Community Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And Dave will give that to the council at this time, the housing authority.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to introduce Ms. Latonya Facen, the Community Development Coordinator. She is a 13-year veteran of the program. She's not a new kid on the block, and she prepares and takes care of a lot of the information that we have to put together for not only the annual report, also known as CAPER, but as well as the annual action plan, and she handles a lot of the financial data in paying our nonprofits and subrecipients, as well as taking in applications from residents for minor repair program, as well as target rehab. So she is here. She's going to take on more duties over time, and so at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and present some bullets, and then I'll open it up for questions for specific programs or any specific questions you may have for the program. The CAPER is an annual report that we have to submit to HUD, and we always come the first council meeting in October. Hopefully, we'll change that, because we've talked to the auditors, and they've agreed to come in in August and September, so we can get all these figures and things put together and make sure we're talking the same language. Okay? And they have a copy of it, but I need your official presentation and the mayor's signature to resubmit to them. They've got it clocked in now, but today, I don't think we have to worry about it. So, some of the bullets is, are, that, I'm going to give you the percentages of what we spent this year. Forty-three point eight percent of our program was spent on housing. One percent was spent on special needs housing and is primarily Jackson Center for Independent Living. They are a slow moving program until recently, because we've sat down with their new director, I guess Beth's been there about a little over a year now, and they have totally had a personnel change over there since Glenn passed away. Homeless programs represent 4.3%, and that does not include the emergency solutions grant, excuse me, it's been emergency shelter for years. They changed the name. Public infrastructure is 118,000 we spent. That's 8.3%, which represent the last payment on the RIFA project. And economic development, that is primarily our payment on the Section 108 loan, principal and interest represents 16.4%. Our public service activities, which include homeless, I mean, legal services, which provide us fair housing, and we are required to have that program. And since we have in-house housing programs, we cannot monitor ourselves for fair housing. It's kind of like fox watching the hen house, so HUD's not going to let us do that. That represent 2.8%. That also included Operation Hope. And CBDO, public services, those are special programs under the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy that allows us to do special economic development slash public service activities in that area. And we funded the Boys and Girls Club for the after-school care, as well as a summer youth program, as well as the WIA Youth Offender Program during the summer. And admin represents 14.7% of the overall budget. We expended approximately $805,123 in CDVG funds and $601,394 in home funds and ESG funds. That has changed, that should represent, it says 10,717, that was BA, prior to the auditors coming in last week, and they wanted some ESG expenditures put back on the previous year, even though we expended them in August. So that's about $37,000 there of ESG funds. Let you know that the Emergency Solutions Program was late in getting started, and the contracts are ready of April this year, so that period has carried over, and so we're going to have to deal with two separate program year periods. So if you've got any questions, we're here to answer them.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman, if you may.
Sure.
Good morning, Mr. Ralston, and Mrs. Facen, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
There has been a call for urgency with respect to demolition and removal of blighted properties.
Yes, sir.
But you are and you represent the other end of the spectrum, the other end of the equation with respect to rebuilding, rehabilitation, and stabilization of neighborhoods. Is that not right?
Correct.
Let me ask the question with respect to the entities, the housing entities that the City of Jackson, through this Jackson community developed now fund. And I'm going to do a roll call, and let me know if I'm right or wrong. That's Jonah, Southwest Human Resource, Habitat for Humanity. Am I missing any?
Those are the primary housing providers, yes.
Okay. We're calling for you all to make a concerted effort. You're making a great effort in filling vacant lots, and when we turn down these houses to replace them, so we can get them back on the tax road. This would definitely help us. Notice your numbers, 2012 to 2013. We know about the federal government cutbacks with respect to housing. But I believe, and I hope this council's belief, that if there's a collaborative effort between all these housing agencies, that we can make a difference in the City of Jackson with respect to housing. Also, I'm asking and I'm urging, I don't know what department is going to do this, that a brochure and a pamphlet be made with respect to the services and contact information of all these housing agencies and passed out, and also a PSA being done. I don't know if it'd be done through our building department, Mr. Chairman, through our housing, community development, but it's something that needs to be done, so the citizens of Jackson will know about the services that are available to them with respect to housing repair and homeownership. Homeownership. Homeownership stabilizes the neighborhood. I'm going to state publicly, in my neighborhood, there's enough apartments. We need single-family homes. There's enough apartments. But you all, I have worked with you in Winston for years and years, seen your work, know what you can do, but we calling for you to bring it up a little higher. I must say, Mr. Chairman, and to this council, that the turndown of dilapidated housing, the attention has been delivered. They're doing a great job, but we're going to have to replace them and get something back on the tax road to keep our tax rate up. Thank you, and I hope that this will be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. It may be well-intended, the Housing Authority may be team up with Neighborhood Services and work on jointly, but if you could, if you could kind of head that up for us and get that brochure available. I do feel like it would be a huge asset to getting people's hands that need assistance in finding affordable housing. Any other, any other comments or questions from council?
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Good morning, Dave. Good morning. Ms. Facen. My initial question is relative to the Section 8 program. If you could just give me just an idea of where we are with Section 8 and what we can kind of expect in the future relative to that program.
Okay, I need to get some clarity. Are you talking about Section 8 as in the housing vouchers?
Section 8 housing vouchers.
I have nothing to do with that program, other than the report that I have received from Sandra King at Section 8. I think that's probably a question better addressed to Winston.
Okay, I can probably get in contact with Ms. King relative to that. My second question is relative to CBG funds. Could you give us an idea, policy-wise, what we can expect?
Well, considering the actions of last night at midnight, it's going to be very difficult for us to anticipate what the CDVG funds are going to be. As far as the government shutdown goes today, there is a HUD plan. We were notified by Mary Wilson, head of the Knoxville Field Office, and that the flow of funds, as we request drawdowns, will not be impacted.
Okay.
We will be able to continue that process and go forward, because these are funds from last year's budget. But looking at next year's program year 13 budget, we have to have a budget from Congress before we can even figure out what's going on. They have not passed a budget at Congress, so it looks like it would be what's called a continuing resolution. And if that's the case, we look like we will be funded close to the same as we have this year, minus the sequester funds, which everybody gets cut on that. So, which, from my opinion, looks better than the House proposal, which cuts CDVG in half, and we're leaning toward seeing Congress eliminate the home program in the future. So, Councilman Buchanan, the less funds we have, the harder it is for us to make an impact, and that's why we need to leverage as many resources as possible. I had a conversation with Terry Coswell, who's at Habitat, about some rehab that needs to be done. They have some dollars that they could use, which would help us, because there are certain areas that we cannot use CDVG. We could use some minor emergency rehab or target rehab to do some rehab on that same house. Terry could use some to do some neighborhood beautification, called Brush Strokes with Kindness. We can get Southwest to begin to look at using their weatherization program on that same house. Then we would have more of a synergistic approach to rehab. In addition, with the anti-neglect, I talked to, I forgot Chris's last name, but Chris over at Healthy Communities, and told him about Shelby County Homestead Plan that I have a copy of, I'll send over to him, which basically, on vacant lots, you utilize basically the private sector. They come in, they put a deposit up to build back on that lot for the debat taxes due, and they have a certain amount of time to build a home back on to that lot. If they do not, then they forfeit that deposit. And so, that's, to me, kind of a win-win situation, at least you get the taxes paid back. And so I have a copy of that, and I'll be more than happy to send to Ms. Merewell and everyone concerned. It's a Shelby County program that we, they use, and we have a similar program like that to the City of Memphis.
Just one last question. Thank you very much. That's very important to have that information and to kind of prepare, I guess, if you can, because we surely don't know what's going to happen in Washington, but something has to happen similarly very quickly. I believe my last question, I am surely an advocate for homelessness and am surely concerned. I do understand that there are six nonprofits that are being funded through ESG funds and just want to...
There are five this year.
Five?
Yes, the past year. Air Relief Ministries decided not to use a utility assistance program, but Ms. Facen can answer just about any question you need on homeless programs.
Okay. Well, I guess it's more comment than a question, Ms. Facen, but surely want to thank you for your work and surely want us to be diligent relative to homelessness here in the city. So, thank you very much.
Their problem is going to be the match dollars for the emergency solution grant. We have provided some that managed when it was a smaller amount, but Congress did approve a larger amount, and they're receiving larger amounts of dollars. But there's in-kind match and so forth, so they're going to have to deal with... and so forth, so they're gonna have to deal with.
So the individual nonprofits are receiving more money, is that what you're saying?
They are.
They are, okay.
How much was that, that total grant this year as compared to last year?
That was my next question.
It's a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
Last year was less than a hundred thousand.
Right, mm-hmm. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ralston, I'm gonna agree with you wholeheartedly, with the partners in housing, and the blending and braiding of funds, this will help us. I know it will, during these economic times, I know it will. If, if a collaborative effort between the housing agencies, it will help stabilize our community.
I appreciate that, but you need to address her remarks to her, because she's going to basically be the person who's gonna be doing that.
Well, Ms. Fasing and Mr. Ralston.
I, I'm gonna pull a General MacArthur on you, I'm gonna fade away.
You, you know, you know, she was the new kid on the block, and we wanna kinda get her abbreviated and warmed up first, but you've been coming up here for years, so we want to stay on you.
Well, this, this most likely will be my last caper I present to you.
All right, and we appreciate all your hard work, I want you to know that, and we wanna state that publicly. You've done a fine job, I've worked with you and many of the council for years and years, and we appreciate your work with respect to housing in the City of Jackson.
It's, it's a, it's a tough program with limited resources. I just wish I had Memphis.
We did, we do appreciate you, and appreciate your years of service to the Housing Authority, and I think you're going to gently fade away, aren't you? You're not going to, you're not going to be beamed up like Scotty or anything, you're gonna be around some. We, we do appreciate you and wish you well as you, as you drift out of your position. Any other, any other questions or comments from council? You need to vote to adopt your...
I, I, it's a good documentation to have, is a resolution, HUD gets happy with resolutions.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, and a second, and discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Several contracts that council need to consider, our first one, Ms. White will come up, consideration of a contract for sod, which we tend to use a lot of, for some strange reason.
It's time to rebid the sod for the City of Jackson, and we advertised in the newspaper, we put it on internet, on our website, we sent out bids, invitations to bids, we received two. One is from Tri-Turf, and one is from Enviro Green. And as you can see, Tri-Turf is the lowest and best bidder, and they only increased their price by a nickel. On the truckload quantities of Bermuda sod, the forty-two inch wide and the Tiffway four nineteen, they only increased it a nickel. And we would like for you to award this contract to Tri-Turf.
Is there a...
One quick question on that. Is this, this is for all season, not just for Pringles Park, and for all season?
It's for every city department that needs sod. This way, they don't have to take quotes, the prices are locked in for possibly five years, and they can just pick up the phone and order it.
And this is a company that we've had it with before, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of this contract?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, and a second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Next contract is consideration of contract for medical clinic services.
It's time to rebid the medical clinic services for the City of Jackson, and we have with us today Keith Patterson, who is a consultant for the Risk Management Department, we have Stacy Stone with Risk Management, Melissa Gordon, and we have two insurance representatives, Rose Weddle and Frances Phillips are here, in case you have any questions for any of them. We sent out proposal invitations to probably forty clinics, we advertised in the newspaper, and we put this on our internet website. We received eight proposals. This group shortlisted those eight to four. We invited the insurance committee representatives who are here today to sit in with us on phone conversations with each of the four shortlisted companies. Then we, all of us met with the insurance committee to let them know about our shortlist, and you have a, excuse me, you have a spreadsheet in your packet, which shows you the four shortlisted companies, and we took a vote from the insurance committee, and they voted to go with the left. It was twenty-three to three, twenty-three for the left and three for Delta Clinic. But if you've gotten questions, we've got several people here who can answer those questions for you.
I just have a quick question, if I may. Susan, were you able to get input from the employees?
Definitely, that was the purpose of the insurance committee. They have, Stacy, would you tell them about the insurance committee and how they represent each department?
Sure. We have, we try to get someone, one or two people from each department, depending on the size of the department, to come and be a part of the insurance committee, in hopes that they will go back and deliver the information to the employees, and get feedback from the employees, and then come back to the committee meetings to represent the employees and their department.
Great, that was my question.
So it was the insurance committee that went back to their departments and got feedback, and then they voted to go with the left?
Committee was, the insurance committee was established about six years ago, mainly from just rank and file employees, no department heads are, are on that committee, and they've served us well for, for the past six years. Any other questions or comments from council?
Susan, I just wanna say that, you know, when this was first presented at the agenda meeting, I thought, well, this is, you know, quite a bit higher, eight thousand dollars from the lowest bid. But, you know, this is not like sod, you know, these are individuals, and they deserve to go to the doctors and to the place where they feel the most comfortable. So you've gotten a lot of input. I contacted several city employees myself, some lived in my district, some didn't, I got the same answer. So I feel comfortable with it now.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council before we vote? Okay, is there a motion for approval of the contract?
So moved.
Have a motion, and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Item six and seven, if we can kinda handle those together, I've asked Stan Pilot to kinda act as our liaison between the purchase of property for a park expansion and the city, and Tony, you may wanna come up and, and go and stand, but he'll, he'll explain to you basically what we've been able to put together, the agreement, the purchase agreement, and still have a few Ts to cross and Is to dot, but by and large, it's pretty much ready for a vote. Stan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have been working on, basically, two sales agreements that involve two property owners. One involves the, the former Highland Green Golf Course property owned by Dr. Bingham, and the other track is property owned by the VFW, and you can see on this map, and I know it's, it looks a little fuzzy on this screen, but basically, you have a, a large piece of property that's reflected by the yellow boundary, which is a part of the former golf course. It originally started out at twenty acres, but in some negotiations and trying to preserve some property that they want to keep for development purposes, the property is about eighteen point five acres now, and also included is, is the VFW property, which is in the red boundary to the north, you've got two point four acres approximately to the west of the VFW facility, and a sixty-foot ingress egress strip of property that encompasses where their current drive, that would be access into this property. It's about an acre, so you've got three point four that's approximately, that's coming from the VFW, and eighteen point five from the Highland Green Golf Course property. We have talked with our engineer, consulting engineer, that the council has approved, they have looked at the property, and the facilities will fit within the bounds of this property. The property is being offered to us, the eighteen point five at ten thousand dollars an acre, which is unheard of in terms of value, North Interstate, finding property of this at that price is, is, is really rare. Also, the VFW, because it is smaller, and also involves some frontage of commercial property, it's, it's a little bit higher per acre, it's twelve point five, but that is within the scope of the appraisal that we received on the property, so it's, it's within the value of the property. So, so basically, you're looking at approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly for the purchase of property, and then some additional expenses that are involved, and some of the conditional things that are contained in the contract, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Tony can answer any questions you have concerning the facilities themselves.
Any questions, council? I know you all have worked closely with the advisory groups that's been working with you all, Tony, on your, on your tennis complex and also on soccer, and I think in, in this format that we have here with the additional property, picking up on VFW, we've, we've found enough space to have at least two practice soccer fields there, which should be a big help due to the popularity of that particular activity here in our city. Any, any questions, council, or comments?
We've got two contracts for approval, don't we, okay? You said contract, but they're two separate.
It's two contracts, one for the VFW and one for the Highland Green property.
Okay, let's, let's handle, we probably need a separate vote on each of these, because it is two separate contracts. Let's go with item six, consideration contract to purchase, what, eighteen point five acres, it's twenty on the agenda, but through some negotiations, that's on the Highland Green property. Is there a motion for approval of this purchase agreement?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is the consideration of the purchase contract for three point four acres of property from the VFW post there. Is there a motion for approval of that?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Item eight is appointment of the mayor's salary review committee, vice mayor, the vice mayor will handle both item eight and nine.
Thank you, Mayor. On the screen, you see a document that I'll be referring to. In the most recent revision of the Charter for the City of Jackson, Section fourteen, which you see on the screen, it is specified that a committee must be formed for the purpose of reviewing the salary of the mayor of the city, and that a committee must be approved for this task by the city council eighteen months prior to the next scheduled municipal election. And that is why this particular item appears on the agenda today. It is mandated by the city charter. You also see there that the purpose of the mayor's salary review is to ensure that the salary of the mayor's position is sufficient to attract qualified candidates for the next election. Notice it is stated that this particular committee shall be composed of five people, the vice mayor, two city council members selected by the vice mayor, one city resident recommended by the vice mayor with approval from the city council, one city resident appointed by the mayor. The charter also states there that the committee members, of course, must live in the city and be eligible to vote. And this morning, I would like to present to the council for your approval, the following persons to serve along with myself on the committee charged with reviewing the salary for the mayor's position, city council members David Cisco and Randy Wallace, and city residents Mal Matthews and Jimmy Cole. These individuals live in the city, they're eligible to vote, they've been contacted, have indicated they are willing to serve, and in addition, I believe that these individuals are objective and fair and conscientious, and will do a good job with this task. Therefore, I am asking at this time that the council approve their appointment.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion for approval of that, that committee, is any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Councilman Buchanan, are you voting?
That was a quick vote, you didn't see it?
The motion passes with eight members in favor and one abstaining.
I think my button stood. I don't know how many times I've voted yes, I think it comes to that.
Okay, item nine is the appointment of the city council salary review committee, and that's also handled by virtue of the charter by the vice mayor.
Okay. In that section of the city charter that we looked at before, if you'll just follow along with me again, it is mandated to appoint a pay review committee to determine if the compensation for city council members is sufficient for the service that they render. Like the other committee, this committee is to be appointed eighteen months prior to the next city election, and that is why we have this on the agenda this morning. The charter states again that there be five members of this committee consisting of the following, the vice mayor, one city resident selected by the council, and three city residents selected by the mayor. Same stipulations, they must live in the city and be eligible to vote. The following persons fit the charter requirements, and they are being recommended to the council this morning to serve on the council pay review committee. Along with myself there are Kathy Leatherwood, Brad Little, Esther Mylum, and Doug Roth. And I believe these individuals are well-suited to the task and will work hard to do a good job for us, and so this morning, I recommend them for your approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion for approval and a second, any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, council.
Item ten is board appointments. Keep Jackson Beautiful Board, the reappointment of Carol Emery.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Also on the tree board, the reappointment of David Middlebrooks and Kevin Andrews.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item eleven is consideration of budget amendments. Bill?
Good morning, bear with me, we have several this month. The first one that you should have in your packets is basically a cleanup budget from the budget ordinance that we had in May. Kate Campbell Robertson Fund actually was closed in two thousand and eleven, so this is moving the funds from the Kate Campbell Robertson Six Eleven Fund to the general fund in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have in your packets is asking for a transfer from the Recreation Capital Line Iman in Pringles Park in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-three cents. This is for some additional equipment that is needed in Pringles Park.
So moved.
A motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The third amendment is an amendment to accept the two thousand and thirteen Burn Jag Grant that will be split between the city and the county. The city's portion will be twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. There is no matching to this grant, total grant will be forty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion for approval, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next amendment that we have is another kind of cleanup amendment. The police department implemented their new software at the end of May, and they had some invoices that came in after the accrual period, but they had funds in the fund balance that rolled back in in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. We're asking to move this, there is no new money, this was just rolled in the fund balance at year-end.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
The next amendment is a new grant that we have received with the police department, the Gang Resistance Intervention Grant, in the amount of ninety thousand, the ninety thousand dollars will be the state, and thirty thousand dollar match per year, and again, we attach letters of commitment from several entities across Jackson that have committed to supply the match to this grant. And Mike Holt is here this morning to address if you have any additional questions about the grant and what it will be used for.
Any, any, let's get a, let's get a motion, a second. We have a motion, so we have a second. Now, discussion from council, if you have any questions.
I had a question, but good, good morning, Mike.
Sure.
It's for three years.
Yes, sir.
Can you reapply at the end of the third year? Do you know?
If funding is available.
If it's available, okay.
When the matches we're getting, would you explain that just a little bit? That's, we're not going to have any match from the city fund or all the other organizations?
No, sir, the city, the mayor would commit up to ten thousand, and there were three other organizations that committed up to ten thousand, which is obviously an overmatch. And then we have two other organizations that committed to help with the, but not to the amount.
And that was kind of in-kind, more or less.
Are we responsible, if the, what are we going to be responsible for as far as monetary?
Should be roughly about seventy-five hundred for you with the match, with the partners, I'm sorry.
And Mike, is it basically training, or can you just explain exactly?
It deals with three main areas that the, that was part of the solicitation, and one is prevention. Training is great, our elementary and middle school, gang and violence prevention. That's actually the bulk of the grant. There's an interdiction component in the juvenile court services that will involve some court ordered parent involvement in probation procedures to help parents keep their kids out of gangs or deal with kids that are in gangs. And then there's a suppression component, and that's where we're using the cameras to deal with problems as they arise.
It sounds very, very promising. Do you know how you're going to measure the success, or how are we going to know we're on the right track?
Okay. The outputs are fairly easy to measure, and that's how many people we're able to reach with the funding and all that. The true measure is going to be down the road, you know, in the reduction, and that's going to be a little harder to a no immediately, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, counsel.
Through intervention of you, and in my twenty years of working with you as a professional, there's nothing better than intervention. And this program is a must and a plus for this city with respect to our youngsters. Train a child in the way it should go, and he may depart, but he'll come back if he got the right training.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We appreciate it, we hope that is a success, and we're willing, we're waiting, and we're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
And I just have to say, Mayor, that I appreciate that so many times since I've been on the council, I've seen grants that benefit the educational system. And teachers haven't been a teacher. They have a difficult job sometimes with disciplining students, I've got a frog in my throat, I'm sorry, with disciplining students. And when you are out there creating grants to educate them and award them the opportunity to learn about the consequences of crime, you're helping the educational teachers so much, and I appreciate that.
Mike, I think we have a signed contract on that, it came in yesterday, I think, did we, Karen?
That's correct.
So we appreciate both of your efforts, especially yours, Mike, in finding the funding and applying for it and being successful in it. We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion or questions from council? If not, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Hey, the next amendment that we have is another cleanup amendment from the year-end fund balance. Farmers Market Capital at the year-end for the amphitheater had some funds left over out of the fifty thousand originally budgeted. Some invoices came in in July and August, we're asking that thirteen thousand be moved from the fund balance that was rolled over at year-end into the farmers market to cover the additional invoices.
Move with approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor and one abstaining.
The next amendment that you have is to move the funds to cover the purchase of the land that was approved for the city of Jackson tennis complex and soccer development, moving that from recreation into the new capital fund that's been set up for us to track those expenses, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The last amendment that we have is to move the Robertson Trust remaining expenses of eight, remaining funds of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars into the new capital that has been set up for the city of Jackson tennis complex and soccer development. Move these funds to be utilized in the development of that complex.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Have a second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Item twelve is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Just for a second?
Second.
Have a second, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.